During the year-end process, there were many adjustment entries that needed to be made, changing the fund balances to their corrected balances. These entries were made in June year-end, thus altering July's beginning balance. Each time entries were made, the fund balance in several accounts were adjusted. This is why July fund balance changed and why other accounts changed. If the adjustments were made in prior periods, I questioned the balances on my report to our accountant on September 25th of 2013, and there's an email attached to this letter we have. Upon receiving AB Fly, I submitted my bank balance/fund balance report for our August Treasurers' report. For those that weren't in our meeting on 10-1, this is the meeting that we had a statement made to the board that we only had $20,000 left to pay bills at that time. My Treasurers' report reflected the bank balances and the fund balances. The error in the August 2013 Treasurers' report was a fund balance error, not a bank balance error. The separation of duties between the clerk and the treasurer requires the treasurer to balance the bank account, and the clerk balances the fund balances. These two reconciled accounts should be in balance each month to each other and reported by the treasurer and the clerk each month. Bank account balances are the treasurer's duties, fund balance or fund accounts are the clerk's. With our clerk now having been in the position for over almost six months, it says five, six months here, and an outside accountant to assist, we should be able to fulfill our individual responsibilities more clearly and actively. I will be providing the clerk's office and the Board of Trustees with a reconciled bank balance, so the clerk's office can then reconcile and report the fund balances to the Board of Trustees. Attached is my Treasurers' report for August 2013, and I have copies for anybody that wants to see them, Nancy has it, so it's nothing. Public knowledge, it's information of the township. The accountant has provided the fund balances for August 2013, so as my understanding, the report is complete for August 2013. It's unfortunate the clerk is not here, the treasurer's not here tonight. I'm reading her letter, this is her words. I personally, as an overall responsible for the funds of the township, have looked at this and do not believe that I can, without the treasurer here to explain their report to us in detail and provide information, cannot very well comment on it. Don't know what to make of it. Open it to the Board at this time, since I've read this? Anybody? Gordy?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll comment on it. I guess, just, I'm probably gonna ramble for a while, so bear with me, this is a big deal. Anybody who attended some of the earlier meetings or even meetings from the last board knows I was often as blunt and critical, and I thought something was incorrect. And I made some statements. I made a statement, as a matter of fact, referring to the previous treasurer, the way that she accounted for the farmland fund and the shoreline fund as being amateur chef es, quote unquote. I'll be as blunt and as critical of this board. Just because I'm on this board doesn't mean I'm on a team. It's my responsibility as a trustee to be very outspoken when I think it's important. The trustee's only responsibility is that I have a fiduciary responsibility in the health, financial health of the township. So, I'd be, if I had a concern about something on this board and I wasn't forthright, I'd be in violation of why I was elected to this position. What happened at the last meeting was basically the, we all get a packet three or four days before the meeting to look at, and it gives us a chance to look through it to see what's going on. If we have any questions, we can voice these at the board meeting. What we get from a financial perspective is a budget report from the clerk that tells us what our budget was, what we spent the current month, what we spent year-to-date, and how we're tracking on the OOL budget. Pretty straightforward, and that usually gets quite a bit of attention. The other report we get is the one we covered today, which is the payables report. That's all the outstanding, the pending checks. We get a report, who the vendor is, what the amount is, usually a description, the ledger number it's gonna go against, and we approve that. Then we get the Treasurers' report. Now, none of those things tell us about the financial condition of the township. That doesn't tell us if we got a dollar in the bank or a million dollars in the bank. The other report we get is the Treasurers' report, which I've always relied on. That's the one that tells us the financial condition of the township. It's called a reconciled report, the Treasurers' reconciled month-end report. In my mind, what reconciled means is you get a statement from the bank at the end of the month, just like you do on for your checking account. Then you look at your outstanding checks that haven't cleared and your outstanding deposits that haven't cleared, and you reconcile. You reconcile that to your checkbook. In this case, when we get a reconciled report, we're assuming, because it says reconciled, that the month-end report from the bank is reconciled with the general ledger. That takes the difference between checks that we may have sent out that haven't been cashed yet, or deposits that we've made that's been posted to the general ledger but has not been recorded by the bank. That's where we stand. And usually, I think most of us might just take a quick glance at that, because you don't get the previous month's report, you just get that month's report. So that's kind of the background. The last meeting, it's the first time I can ever recall the Treasurers' report being pulled from the consent calendar. The other reports oftentimes do. That report was pulled by the treasurer, and with no prior notice of why it was being pulled or what was going on, with the comment that there were some small changes that were made to the format that made it more readable. So the August report that was distributed, there's some small, quote-unquote, "small changes" made to the format that made it more readable. Then it was, you know, just, she mentioned that in the general fund, which is the primary fund, there were $631,000. However, $611,000 was committed, couldn't spend it. So we had a spendable balance, if you would, of $20,000. And we had checks, we had pending invoices of $57,000. There was a noticeable pause at the board, you know, we had never heard anything like this. Completely off-guard, no heads-up on this whatsoever, just, "by the way, we have $20,000, we have outstanding bills of $57,000. $57,000 has to turn up, turn up real long." The rest of the discussion, for anybody who was here, who has listened to the tape or has viewed it, most discussion was how are we gonna pay the bills? Where can we get the money from? Is there any bills that we can delay? That's pretty much where the discussion, in my part in the discussion, was that. Where can we get the money? What fund? How are we gonna do it? How are we gonna address this? I think the two most salient, three most salient comments that came out of that, if you go back and look at the notes, was from Paul Scott. Now, I was sitting there babbling about where are we gonna get the money to pay the bills. Scott's comment, he had been on the board for eight years and he had never seen this before, and wondered if we were just looking at the report differently, to which Collette responded, "No." So he's been on the board eight years prior to this year, he's been a year, almost nine years, and he's never heard this situation. We don't have money to pay the bills. More discussion went on, then he made a comment, Scott had, and I think this is, this sums it off. Scott asked, "Why was this not brought to the board with more answers, since the report that was generated, the Treasurers' report was generated last week, and that wording of this very substantial issue, the way the board did, was inappropriate?" That's really the crux. I mean, if, if in fact we had a cash flow problem or something, you know, expenses were really high and revenues were really low, you could run into the situation. Now, I have to look back to the previous, two previous months in the year, and we're right on target. Revenues were about 11.8% of budget, and expenses were 10.4%. So we're tracking according to the budget right on. Now, didn't have this information at the time of the meeting, because we were, this is pretty much just dumped on us. Then, I guess the last point in the meeting, the way it closed off and why we're here today, is Paul said that the board should not accept the Treasurers' August report, as the board does not understand it, and a couple of the other board members agreed, and we said, "I'm sure if you went back in the logs, as far as we have them in the township, the Treasurers' report probably has never been pulled off the consent calendar and not approved." But, so that's where we were today, to say, "Okay, what happened? We need some answers." Because sitting in a meeting such as this, looking at spreadsheets and trying to figure things out is not productive. That's not the way you do things. So, now to come to the part of the crux of this whole thing. August, all of a sudden, we have this problem. Paul says he's never seen anything like this. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I just don't know. I went back to the July report. So we were given the August month-end, weren't given the July month-end. It's not in the packet. Normally, I would never have, occasionally, I get a packet to go and back, look at previous reports. And when you look at it, and I'm not gonna go through it, but let me just give you a couple of numbers. The July, this is the monthly Treasurers' report reconciled with the bank as of July 2013. And it says here, "July 31st, 2013, account balance," and lists out the five components of the general fund. And there's a total line there. There's no way you can assume that number is, it's the sum of all of these numbers. General fund account, proxy house, relocation, septic plant, whatever, $1,279. Normally, on a report such as this, you'd go to the August report, and for the July 31st, 2013, the beginning balance, they should match. I mean, that's the way it works. The August report doesn't read $1,279, it reads $667,000. Huge change. And that's described as a little change to the format to make it more readable. I've gone back to audit, last audit in June of '12, looked at the Treasurers' report, tried to move from month to month to month to see how we progressed on this, I've got a summary someplace, to how we had this huge disconnect from these months. And you can go back to January, take the January's Treasury report, February, March, and they pretty much track, ending balance, beginning balance, ending balance, beginning balance. You can add them up and see how they tick along. And all of a sudden, August just goes in the tank. I think I know what happened. It was some sloppy reports that were produced that were misleading for all these months. So I went back and tried to take the new logic in the way the August report was explained and apply it to previous months, and I still can't come up with any, any numbers that match whatsoever. And I've spent, it's been a long time looking at this. So, I am totally confused as to where we stand for a fund balance. I think we all took this very serious at the last meeting. I mean, we didn't understand what the report said, to the point of calling a special meeting. Everyone said, "Don't understand this, there was a vote, it said we're not gonna accept it." So you've got this big issue. How do we go from a $1,279 to apparently $667? I then asked, so I'm concerned. Then I asked a question, because I did happen to see on the July report, that in one of the funds, the septic plant fund, which is an amount of money that's in the general fund that's held aside for the septic plant in case it goes completely kafluied and we have to pay off the township's obligations, it showed a balance of $339,000. It was the amount of money that was held in reserve for that plant at the end of July. Then, on the August report, it showed only $187,000. So it went from $339 on July 31st to $187 on July 31st. How can that, how can that be? The response was, at the meeting, because I, actually, I'd seen, that's the only number I saw that made me concerned about these reports, I had asked, actually asked the treasurer beforehand, "How did this happen?" I mean, what, this doesn't make any sense. At the meeting, the response was, "We made some year-end adjustments at the end of June, and that's the reason." You can't go back, once you publish something, and, I mean, any transaction has to appear in the period it was done. Not, if I'm making an adjustment to an error in a previous period, I make the adjustment in this period and I show the money's moving. So, quite honestly, some red flags go up as to what's going on, and supervisor tried to schedule a couple of meetings, sent all of us emails, and trying to get seven people all to agree to come to a meeting that isn't scheduled is tough. And if people have different commitments, then whatever. The report, it came, went out, said, "Here are two dates." This was a week or so after, this was the same week of the original meeting. For this very important meeting, in my mind, and the treasurer's response was, she has other commitments on those dates. And I think to myself, what other commitment could be more important than addressing this issue? That was then followed up with an email saying, "And I'm gonna be out of the office for the next two weeks," which she was. So we've been waiting for three weeks now to find out where are we, and how did we get, wherever it is we are, how did we get there? And at anxiously waiting, today was gonna be the explanation, and I sent an email, a couple of emails saying, "This is the information I would like. Give me a heads-up. I don't want to come to the meeting and then be say, 'This is what I want.' Give me a heads-up, this is the information. Please get it to us before the meeting, so we can look at it." So I don't wanna come up here, and I'm not gonna look, I refuse to look at what is handed out at three hours in. I won't look at another spreadsheet.
Let me ask, if you don't mind me interrupting. I'll let you go on. I wanna make sure, Amy, I don't know that you saw it before you came here tonight.
No.
Doug, were you able to?
I read it.
Did you get the email on this before you came to the meeting tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to point.
I mean, I got it, I was just.
We all got it very late.
They sent that three or four client this afternoon, this spreadsheet, with the fact, and I won't be able to make the meeting. I'm, you know, I'm livid. I am absolutely livid. The way it was presented as a minor, a little change in the format, and quickly, I do, how are we going to pay the bill with most, I mean, the way you should have done it beforehand is I've changed the format. Here's the old format, here's the new format, and here's what it is. I am very concerned at the lack of professionalism of that position. It's, probably have more, certainly the clerk and the treasurer have got the most responsibilities, but they're the two that handle the money. And we may make some bum decisions on the shoreline, or doing this, or people disagree, but the one thing is, you know, that money's got, there's no reason why it doesn't balance to the penny. So I, I am, I just wanna go on record and say, I am beside myself on how this came about, how this was attempted to be shoved through in nonresponsibility to the treasurer. Treasurer does report to me, as she's told me several times, doesn't report to anybody here, I don't report to anybody here, we're all independent, we have no control over one eve, I have no control over, Kathy could refuse to pay the bills, we have no, you know, and that was kind of a shock, right? I knew that, but I didn't really know to the extent that we have no control over one of them. But again, my own responsibility is fiduciary one, and I can't imagine a scenario where I will not pull that Treasurers' report off the consent calendar going forward and refuse to approve it until I get something, and I'm not gonna sit here and look at spreadsheets to improve the face. No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was the email sent by, from Collette?
To all of us.
All right.
Yes, so you know. Does anybody else have any comment they wanted to make? If not, I have one, I think, so you can go ahead.
Well, I don't know, because I don't know if it's a deed-off or what, or points of clarification, because I understand you didn't read this, and I understand Kai's not here, so I'm probably not gonna get an answer from this. But on a report, first of all, Kathy, do you get copies of the bank statements that you're able to at least confirm what we have in the bank account? Because that's where my concern is coming in, is like, okay, in August of 2013, I show here, we show $634. Well, on the one she just emailed me, I show $1,151,061. So now we're back to our original June numbers, not this $600,000, which was implied that we had. And so, I guess, it is a checks and balance. That's what government is, is a checks and balance. And so, I understand that you're funds, and I understand she's the cash and balancing with the bank. But there's gotta be some cooperation that you guys have to figure out how to make it work, because I guess I don't know, without Gordy and I and Doug then coming in and doing your jobs to then cross-reference to make sure that you've done your job, you know what I mean? Because nobody is under control, I don't know how we're gonna solve this problem. Rather than a he said, she said, "Whatever." I just wanna know how much we have, actually, the bank. I wanna know, I wanna make sure there's no crisis. I do understand how the money comes in. This is one point that I need, I called MTA. But it's, you know, the way the money comes into a township, it is a flux, okay? So because of the way we do our budget cycle, which is June to, from July to June, we don't collect tax dollars, which is not a huge portion, but it is a portion of it, which we get in December, okay? So then we only get revenue share. So there is potentially a low, but then there's a surge, okay, of income. And so, it's like, I understand, as long as we don't plead under our three months' worth, it will be there. It's not, I mean, I guess that's my concern, is it's like, when I look back at the spreadsheet that I got at four o'clock, okay? Just so you know, I have not studied it, but when I'm going back and forth from the different years, because all the years are attached, it goes all the way back to July of 2012. I mean, it's about the same amount. I mean, it's, you know, plus or minus a little, just because of different, you know, different funds that were spent, you know, shoreline, whatever, but still, it's not that dramatic of a difference at this time of year, I guess. So that's where I'm trying to figure out. Has somebody looked at the actual bank statement? What does it balance to?
What does it balance to? Well, these numbers across here.
Okay.
On the top.
Yes.
Are your account balance that.
At the end of those months?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's something that I, that we're, yeah.
I think the issue.
I just started getting the bank statements like three months, three, four months ago. This is all, this is, we're working through this. This is one of the situations of crossing boundaries between the treasurer and the clerk's department, and Denny, oh, the accountant.
Sorry.
Has been giving us some assistance with that, because it is kinda complicated for me, and those things are being looked into.
You know, there's a lot of discussion, and you're right, the income comes in at different times, it's lumpy when it comes in, and expenses are pretty even, there's a few lumps, whatever, whatever. So that was, you know, that was a big point of discussion, was that maybe it's a cash flow thing. And I, yeah, I mean.
There's history.
That's true. However, and I was ready to sign off. I didn't raise any issues, whatever, and we're gonna go back. It's when I went back and looked at July and said, "Wait, cash flow doesn't come into play when the July report and the August report are so different." And the other thing is, if you look at, if you look at the Treasurers' report, and she's the one that signs it, you know, I'm, when I get a report and she's got a signature on it, I'm not, I'm not gonna audit it. I'm not gonna go back and add, do math. If she says this is it, this is it. And if you go back to her reports from November through August, and she's got a position, there was a net change in the fund. One month it goes up, one month it goes down, one month it goes up, one month it goes down. When you add up from November through August, the net changes, it's a positive $130,000. So nothing, you know, I'm saying, okay, well, maybe it's a cash flow thing. No, if anything, we should be way up here. The July report, if you look at it, says we're in tall cotton. You go back to the sum of the net changes, yep, it even seemed a little bit higher than, I mean, than I thought, maybe it's, boy, her report says that's what it is, we have a hundred, a million, or, a million, what was it, $122,000 or whatever it was? And the net changes are positive, $135,000? Again, I don't know what the heck.
I'd like to make two clarifications, two. One for the public. If you, if you weren't aware of the tax, what we, about the taxing, when you get your taxes, the last bill you pay, most all of that doesn't come to the township. That goes to the county. Some people aren't aware of that, some aren't. And so, you know, we have this spike later, but we have to get through this period. There is some money we get in that period for collecting the taxes for the county, but we, it's very little of our income. So that's, that's important to know.
That would be our summer, summer taxes, right?
Yeah, I think the last rate pays the summer. So it's just an important feature of the process, it's nothing new. My personal belief is, I don't wanna try to analyze somebody else's report. I think it's important that the person that provides the report is here to talk to all of us about it, and we, we're concerned about having this meeting, we wanted to have it because we believe it's important that we are good managers of your money as the public. The money's not ours, other than our portion of the taxes. It is the public's money. And I would propose, because it was unfortunate that our treasurer can't be here and we couldn't get it scheduled sooner, we all tried, but in fact, we, we don't try to figure out the report, because I don't have the person to put it together here, if they need to be here. I would recommend that we table this item till our regular next meeting, that the treasurer can be here to explain it to all of us, and at the same time, that we will look at some of the data that our accountant has looked at and independently look at that, instead of hiring somebody else to look at it, you know, as an outsider. I think we need, we owe that to you and to ourselves to understand the data. I just, I can't analyze. I can look at it all, I can read it all, I can't compute it all. And so I would look at a lot of other data, it's like we, anything you have, as Gordy said, when you have one report, you gotta have all the things lined up and kinda work through it. So my proposal would be to the Board, and we can discuss it, which is my proposal, that we table this item, we also would table under that the old business of approved Treasurers' report till our next meeting. We're not gonna let up on this, we need to understand it. If it's just a personal mistake or a number, we just need to understand it, because we do have, we have to be responsible to you and to our fiduciary responsibilities all of us have, and make sure that we've got the right numbers. And the data I've looked at personally, and we will. And the data I've looked at personally, and we will, Kathy and I had seen a preliminary copy of this yesterday. We met with the treasurer yesterday, so there's no hidden thing, and we did see it, and we said, "We just can't comment. It's not ours to comment on." And I would say the same of Kathy's report, I might ask questions, but Kathy puts it together. So, that would be my proposal, that we don't try to do anything but table it and move on, because I don't think we have all the players here to directly address this issue.
No, I, I'll agree with you there, but if you met with Connie, have you guys figured out a way to?
I haven't met with Connie until yesterday.
Okay.
Since October 1st until yesterday.
Okay. So, during that meeting, I guess, let me ask you that, did you guys figure out how you're gonna present it at the next board meeting? Like, you guys have a game plan to how it's gonna come out? I mean, I guess it's one thing to get the numbers right, I agree, but when I look at this spreadsheet just quickly, I wonder what it says? I mean, it seems like in the letter, too, there's a couple comments in there. I'm just trying to.
You're being kind.
Make sure that you guys have, you know what I mean? I'm wanting it, or with you guys and the bookkeeper, or accountant.
Book.
Has that been, you know, you know, I'm just trying to.
Well, I think we are being real kind. We've been trying to do this for weeks, and not having access to our treasurer for two weeks with no response to this, other than cursory, is very hard to do. Number two is, we, I do believe that Kathy and I, I don't care whether it's you and Kathy, I don't care whether it's Gordy and Kathy, it's not me, that sits down with the accountant and we go through it with it, and so we understand it. I can't make heads or tails of a lot of this number. I can't make, there's an attachment letter from the, from the.
I mean, just trying to know where the numbers came from. If you don't know, if you can't trust the numbers.
I agree with that, and I don't have that source.
From whatever.
Yeah.
Then it's, I can put whatever you want in this report.
And that's why I'm saying this needs to be tabled. We don't have it. We don't have the data, and we need to, we need to have the accountant sit down and say, "Here is the data, I agree with this, I don't agree with this, or what it is." I just don't know, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna second-guess it one way or the other.
I, I really.